Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the regular city council meeting of Tuesday, October 11th, 2017. You'll please stand for our Pledge of Allegiance so we can get on with our meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Corcoran, if you call the roll, please.
Mayor Meekley.
I am present.
Deputy Mayor Ziegler.
Here.
Councilmember Beagle.
Here.
Councilmember Backdon.
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Here.
Councilmember Reston.
Here.
Councilmember Smiley.
Here.
Form present.
Thank you. Before we move on with our agenda, I would like to make it known to all those that are in our public tonight, that are here seated, that tonight's meeting is being taped by Wald Lake Public TV, our high school, Wald Lake Western. So if you have an issue with being here, being on tape, or being heard, then, you know, obviously you need to do what you need to do. However, during our call to the public, and you have a need to come up to the podium and address the council on either of our two calls to the public, that portion will not put you on, we won't put you on TV. Okay? So with that, Mr. Goodline, do you have any changes or additions to the agenda presented tonight, sir?
I do not, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for asking.
Very good. Thank you, Andy, for the guidance. First, up on our agenda, we have a public hearing for Tremec Corporation. I'd like to read the rules for our public hearings. During our public hearing, persons desiring to address the council shall state their name and address. Individual person shall be allowed five minutes to address the council. There shall be no questioning by the audience of persons addressing the council. However, the council members may question persons who are addressing the council. No person shall be allowed to address the council more than once. So with that, we will hear from Ms. Parker and introduce, again, our public hearing.
The public hearing tonight is for Tremec Corporation. Tremec recently signed a lease for the property on Ryan Court, and they were brought to me a couple of years ago, actually, by the MEDC, and for a large investment of approximately $54 million that they would be bringing to the state. And so as a partnership with the MEDC, it is typical for a community to offer some kind of tax incentive. With Tremec Corporation coming to the city, they were, are going to create 133 jobs at the site, which is the incentive that earned them the MEDC credits, if you will. So they are here tonight for their tax-aiming request on the build-out of the building only.
With that, we will open the public hearing for Tremec, and again, I stress, if anybody has any questions regarding the rules for public speaking during a public hearing, but with that, I will officially open the public hearing. So anyone wishing to address the council tonight on our public hearing item for Tremec Corporation, now is your time to do so. Anyone wishing to address the council tonight on the public hearing for the Tremec Corporation. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Next item on the agenda will be a presentation of coal tar-based seal coat presentation by Rebecca Esselman of the Huron River Watershed Council.
Hello, councilmembers. Thank you for having me up tonight. My name is Rebecca Esselman, and I represent the Huron River Watershed Council. The Huron River Watershed Council represents governments throughout the watershed, including Wixom, and we've worked with you guys on several issues in the past pertaining to water quality, including help supporting Norton Creek and improvements with water quality issues there. And what I'm here to talk with you about tonight is another issue that we've been talking with our communities about, and that's the coal tar pavement sealers that have known impacts for aquatic organisms and for human health. So I have shared with you ahead of the meeting some materials on this topic that I hope you've had a chance to review. I will keep my comments brief to allow you guys time to ask me questions. But essentially, these are the, this is one type of product that's used to maintain low-traffic asphalt surfaces. So it's not roadways, but it's driveways and it's parking lots. Coal tar pitch, which is the base of this product, is really high in a group of compounds called polysaccharal aromatic hydrocarbons, many of which, I'll call those pHs from here on out, but many of those are toxic, and several are known carcinogens. This product is applied widely in our area. In fact, it's applied widely everywhere east of the Rocky Mountains. It is the primary product that's used to maintain asphalt surfaces, but the recommendations are to reapply every two to three years, and that's because the seal coat weathers. And when it weathers, it enters our environment via various pathways. It runs off into our soil, gets into our waterways and detention ponds and stormwater systems, and it gets trapped into our homes on our shoes. So once in our environment, we're exposed to it various ways, and there are quite a few risks associated with that exposure. There's been evidence that the elevated pHs cause death in fish and aquatic insects and increases cancer rates in humans. So we are advocating with our communities to ban the use of these seal coat products. And one of the reasons that this is a feasible option is that there is an alternative product. People can continue to seal coat their driveways. They can do so with a product that's readily available at the same place that they pick up the coal tar pavement seal coat, at a very similar cost. So no one has to go out of business. People continue to maintain their surfaces if they choose to do so, but they do so with a product that's far safer for our environment and for our communities. I'll stop there and take any questions, and then, you know, what we are asking of our communities is to take some sort of action. Ideally, an ordinance would be adopted that prohibited the use of this product within Wixom. So we've had six communities in the watershed take this action already. There are several states. The state of Minnesota, Washington DC, and the state of Washington all have statewide bans, and there are many municipal bans, a growing number of municipal bans throughout the nation as awareness grows about this issue. So if you want to pursue that option, we have ordinance language, and the Watershed Council is happy to work with you on that to the degree that it's helpful. We also are advocating for communities to do some outreach and education to their residents so that they can make informed choices about how they maintain their pavement. And then finally, there is a house bill that's been introduced at the state level. I think that would be the ideal outcome for both applicators, manufacturers, and consumers. An additional action that Wixom can take is to let your state representatives know that you support a statewide ban for every product.
I've got about three or four questions. Just in researching this, and the, one of the interesting things I found was that coal tar pitch remains a base ingredient in several creams that are approved by the FDA for treating the eczema and severe, and psoriasis and skin disorders. And for decades, it's been approved, and neither the EPA nor the FDA have banned its use in, use of facial creams and stuff like that. Why is that? Is it a different form of coal tar pitch used in the?
It's the same form, but it's a far lower concentration. The FDA has been decreasing the percentage of coal tar that they recommend in those products, and it's for a very specific targeted use for medical purposes as opposed to, you know, widespread application throughout our environment. But the key here is the concentration.
One of the other things that was, is interesting is I think the Home Depots and the Lowe's of the world, they still offer both products, right?
No, actually, most of the larger hardware stores voluntarily removed coal tar products from their shelves. It was considered a liability for which they didn't need to take the risk because there was the alternative product. So they stock the asphalt-based seal coats and not the coal tar. Unfortunately, well, fortunately, most people don't take this job on themselves. They don't, it's a pretty nasty job, so they hire contractors and companies, by and large, use the coal tar product.
How come not many states or communities have actually put in the ordinance in place? You know, Texas had done it quite some time ago, right? And Austin was one of the big cases. But so few communities have done it. Is there a reason?
I think there's a growing number of communities doing it because there's mounting evidence and there's growing awareness. So Austin banned coal tar sealants about 10 years ago, and there was a quiet period, but since then, there's been a growing number of communities in, I'm not sure how many states, but double-digit numbers of states have at least some local bans. The entire Anacostia River Basin, over on the East Coast, has bans, and I feel like the momentum's growing in the direction where these things are being adopted pretty readily on a regent basis.
Yes? Thank you for coming to present before us tonight. You mentioned a few other cities have put bans in place. Which cities are those?
In Michigan, Ann Arbor, Iksalani, Van Buren Township, Sylle Township, Dexter, and Hamburg.
That's pretty much Washitoff County.
There's Hamburg and there's.
Pretty much Washitoff County.
Van Buren.
You mentioned Houseville, what is the Houseville number?
5174.
And where does it stand right now?
It's been referred to the National Resource Committee, and it's awaiting a hearing.
Do you have any remarks from Andrea LaFontaine on that?
We've been up to speak with her about this, and she's looking at the schedule for this fall to see if we can get a hearing.
How many applications would you know of that have been applied to the material within five miles of Wixom?
I don't have those numbers.
Well, who regulates that?
Nobody regulates that.
Who regulates? Okay, so where would one buy it if they, Menards has removed it, Home Depot and so forth, so if John Doe is going to do his or her own driveway at home, then obviously they would go to a Menards or a Home Depot and buy the goof and buy the brushes and slap it on over the weekend. But if they hire Joe's driveway taring company, so is he buying it in bulk from a Betunis supplier that's going to fill his tank with this type of material? Does that contractor have a choice to use brand A or brand B?
Yes. So there's three major suppliers in Michigan: Gem Seal, Seal Master, and B&amp;E. B&amp;E is a newer manufacturer that only does the asphalt base. He wanted to be a safer seal coat company, and so he's doing that out of Grand Rapids. Master Seal and, I'm sorry, Seal Master and Gem Seal are the major players in the manufacturing sector in Michigan. They both have, I think the applicators that would be applying in Wixom could be purchasing their product from either of those manufacturers. Both of them have a coal tar formulation and an asphalt-based formulation available to their.
So I'm going to direct my next question to our DPW director. If a commercial company, and maybe a building department as well, if a commercial company is going to do a parking lot, let's say, that's at a church or at a business, do they normally have to pull a permit in order to do that particular type?
Yes, it's typically done under. I'm sorry, yes, it's typically done under a zoning. If it's a commercial operation, not for a residential.
Right, that's what I'm looking for. Okay. And under that zoning approval, is there restrictions already in place on what they can and cannot use as a contractor?
No.
Okay, so if they want to put down melted marshmallows, they can put that down?
I would say theoretically, if it would comply with some ASTM standard, yes.
Okay, so I get, that answered my question.
Okay.
So why is it that, when you look at predominantly Washitoff County, as far as what you're representing to us, other than Van Buren Township and Hamburg, but to me, that's pretty much Washitoff County? Why, tell me why most of those communities adopted this type of work? They must have had some issues.
They didn't have issues. I would say it's a geography thing. Huron River Watershed Council is based in Ann Arbor, and those are the communities that we've gotten in front of earliest. This is my first time, I presented in Milford, but we're trying to expand our reach to the headwater communities of the Huron.
So how long ago did you present in Milford?
Last summer.
Take any action?
They mailed the brochure to every resident in their summer jackets.
Which that's, that's, I think, would they have been applying ordinance?
No.
Mr. Mayor? The question I had was, any of these ordinances that have been passed in any of those other communities, have there been lawsuits, any lawsuits that have now filed from these companies that handled the materials against those communities?
No, there have not.
Okay, so.
The ordinances have been going through legal review in each of the communities, and they're, you know, written to be signed.
We know from our experience that even though we have passed ordinances in the past, that oftentimes people find problems with them. They sue us, and we end up litigation. Sometimes you find proof to kind of wait, help wake that out, put the process play out elsewhere, and then we're able to be a little bit more prudent to get it axed out. Thank you.
My last question. Would this also be used in difficult crack sealing applications that municipalities and communities would have that particular product?
No, my understanding is it's not.
All right, so if we put down a second pass.
Yeah, it's not, it's also not.
I know we don't use marshmallows for that application.
If not utilized as projects are, you know, as pavement is being laid down initially either, it's just a maintenance practice after.
So it sounds like a lot of driveways and potentially small, maybe churches, commercial buildings, parking lots.
Big malls, malls, any industry parking lots, schools, you know, at the very least, you might want to call it the schools and see if it's a practice and encourage using the alternative product.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, next item up on the agenda would be the approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting of September 27th, 2016. Do I have a motion?
Several support.
I have a motion by Councilman Smiley and seconded by Councilman Kennedy to approve the regular city council meeting minutes of September 27th, 2016. Any changes? Anybody had? Correction, mayor. So again, I have a motion by Councilman Smiley and seconded by Councilman Kennedy to approve the regular city council meeting minutes of September 27th, 2016. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes aye. We have a correspondence letter of John Correto on his resignation from the Downtown Development Authority due to, he's got other things going on in his life right now, and so he continues to want to volunteer, and we thank John for his time that he was able to spend on the DDoE. Next item on the agenda would be the first call to the public, and again, the rules for the call to the public are as follows. The public shall address the council during the call to the public, which shall be included on the agenda immediately after correspondence and, again, immediately after new business. The first call to the public, immediately after correspondence, shall be limited to agenda items only. A person shall not address the council in excess of five minutes unless the time is extended by a majority vote of the council present. Persons wishing to address the council shall identify themselves and in place of residence and shall state their reason for addressing the council. All comments by the public shall be made directly to the council. Anyone wishing to address the council tonight on the first call to the public regarding any agenda item? Anyone wishing to address the council tonight on any agenda item? Okay, seeing none, I will close the first call to the public. Next item on the agenda is the city managers' report, and we have the August 2016 fire report to be reported. Any questions or comments in there? Councilmember Reston?
Could you just comment? I happen to have attended a lot of the public events and some private events that were going on in the city this past Saturday, and I ran into a lot of residents who had been in the city for 20, 25, 30 years and had never been down to the fire station. And the first time they were there, they said, wow, we've got some really nice equipment and it's maintained nicely. So good job, Jeff and crew, and it was a very good showing, and I think people see, you know, how their tax dollars are being spent on some really great equipment. It's allowing us to respond quickly, so.
Fire monthly report. Okay, the next item on the managers' reports is the police monthly report for August of 2016.
Thank you. I noticed in the year-to-date for August, the percy crimes decreased by 20, you noted, and it looks like the arrests went up quite a bit. What kind of percy crimes would contribute to the overall category going downward, arrests climbing?
Probably pre-laden offenses.
Okay. Okay. It just seemed odd usually you would expect a crime for a category that's still going down, arrests would follow that, but we had a little bit of a jump there while overall crime was coming down, so.
All right, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda are considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member is so requested, in which event the items will be removed from the consent agenda and added to the regular agenda at the end of unfinished or new business. Do I have a motion?
Support.
I have a motion by Deputy Mayor Ziegler and seconded by Councilman Beagle to accept the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, the ayes aye. We have no unfinished business. So the next item on the agenda would be new business recommendation by the Tax Abatement Review Committee to adopt a resolution authorizing the issuance of a seven-year industrial facilities exemption certificate for real property as requested by Ops Solutions LLC in accordance with Public Act 198 of 1974, as a method. Do I have a motion?
Support.
Any questions? Thank you. Yes, questions? Councilmember Beagle?
Thanks. Is there a representative from the complex here tonight?
Will. Let me just say that Eve and Paul Reisner had a very important meeting in California that they could not miss. Will is here, so if you don't mind, Will, coming up forward. He is the chief technical officer, is that correct?
Hi. Maybe just for the record, Will, give us your main address of the ops location. Your full name.
Yeah, my full name is William Thomas Dumberg, and my personal address?
No, no, this is business, Mike.
Ah, yeah, well, we are moving into Alfa Drive.
Right.
Boy, there's 48443 Alfa Drive.
Okay, thanks. That's good.
Just wanted to introduce himself and tell us a little bit about this company.
Yeah, so Ops Solutions is a, primarily a software company, but we provide solutions for manufacturers. And what we do is we make air moving software and systems for basically every manufacturing industry in the state and the country in the world. So we're doing a lot of work with the automotive companies, we're doing a lot of work with medical devices, defense, aerospace, food preparation. And what we do is we use overhead video projectors, and we project the right information that an operator in a manufacturing plant needs to do the job. So a very interactive system with air roofing, like machine vision and other equipment, and we, maybe make the work speak to the operators so they do the job correctly.
Very good. Thank you. I noticed, and this might be more a question for Ms. Parker, but you note in your report that the MEDC grant that they received isn't being transferred from Novi to Wixom?
Yeah, this is a different type of a grant than what we were speaking about for Tremec. I'm not really up to speed on that whole thing. Had to do with the number of employees that they took into the Novi location, and it wasn't a large enough number of employees that they're adding on for the new incentive packages that the MEDC is, has created in their restructuring over the last year. And so it wasn't large enough to create a new incentive for this one, and so they kind of lost that incentive.
So would they, would the incentive gone away if they received a Novi anyway? Like, is it something they get to reapply for the grant, or because they wanted it moved, the MEDC looked at the numbers again and say?
Well, it was a request to move it, they weren't sure if they could, but they need, Ops needed more space. They had run out of space in Novi.
Okay. And then I had emailed a few questions into our city manager a few weeks ago, so I just wanted to ask those now. Being given that, we had our town hall meeting recently, and Mr. Heber explained for condo-style industrial buildings or commercial buildings, obviously, as people come in and out with leases, the tax doesn't change because it's for the whole building. If a company in this case is making improvement of $430,000, what is their taxable value increase actually? Is it $430,000, or is it less than that?
Well, it's whatever the market value is. And so, you know, whatever the technical things that they're putting in there, whatever the market value is for that.
Okay, so, but theoretically, it'd be at least half, it'd be less? On a good day, it'd be half because taxable value should be half of the improvement. So if somebody were paying $430,000 for this, the taxable value is half of that?
Could increase that.
Okay, so when we're giving an abatement, are we giving an abatement on the actual taxable increase or on the whole $430,000 worth of value?
It's on the market value.
Okay. Okay, so, being that taxes are lower than they should be now because of the recession, and then giving an abatement on the full market value even though our taxable value is only going up, not as much as this, you're kind of like giving a break on a break?
Well, you have to consider that maybe what the market values are now are the new market values. So what they were in 2008 may have been the peak, now the new market value It's the cost to build which hasn't reduced.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Um, uh, being on the Tax Abatement Committee myself, I was very impressed by your, uh, presentation from your owners. And I think that, um, a couple of us were talking afterwards. I'm a little concerned that, that the simple fact that I think you, I guess I shouldn't be concerned, I guess I'm more excited. I think, I think you folks are going to be worth a lot of money in a short period of time. Um, the, uh, you were very, um, how should I say, um, easy on the description of what it is that you do. But I, but I think if, if most people were at the meeting that I attended and if, maybe I can just spend a minute explaining to everybody what it is that you do. Being from the automotive world that I'm in, if you go into a automotive assembly plant, every particular area on the assembly line has like an instruction manual hanging right above that operator. And that instruction manual will sit there and say, you know, you put part A to part B and part B to part C and part C to part D and part E, you know, and here, away you go. And then when you're done, you know, the part should look like this and not all the A, B, C, D, E, F, G. Well, simple math of what these folks do is a camera shot comes up in front of the operator and part A is shown and it shows where it goes and then B and C. So, the potential for error is, is like greatly and significantly reduced. Um, I think an easy way of what they showed us was like when they go to a trade show, they, they have the components of a pen sitting in five or six boxes and it shows part A, the spring and the ink and so on and how it all goes together. And if one of those parts, the camera doesn't pick up, the camera picks up, if one of those parts is not put in properly, you know, a bell goes off or a sound or alarm or whatever and it stops. It also helps the automotive company or whoever's doing production count the number of errors that they have to improve their efficiency. So, like I said, I, I, for me, this, seeing this is state-of-the-art in the automotive industry and the medical industry and, and I think the technology allows our country, um, to improve upon its quality, which is always probably one of the more difficult of things as we face a lot of what's manufactured in Europe, uh, because they always think, tell us that they manufacture things better than we. But, um, and you'll attest to that once you, but I think that, um, in, in seeing this at, uh, demonstration that, um, we're very lucky to get you over from Novi, to shag you from Novi. So, I, uh, wholeheartedly support this, uh, tax incentive and the exemption and I'm ready to call a vote. Oh, sure, okay, Councilman Kennedy.
Um, how long were you in Novi?
Um, we set up our office January first, 2013. So, since January first, 2013.
And did you get a tax abatement out of Novi?
Not that I recall. I wasn't involved in that.
Mr. Parker's shaking her head no.
Yeah, I'm the technical guy.
Um, the, the minutes from the Tax Abatement Committee meeting of, uh, August, August, uh, what was it, third? Where, where are those at? They're not attached to our minutes.
They should be.
I think it's the next one. Well, it sits there and talks about the, uh...
Oh, they were on, they were on for the, um, they didn't include them, they were on when, when the public hearing.
We didn't confirm the public hearing either.
Oh, here they are. No, sorry. So, they were probably not attached to this, they were probably attached when we had the public hearing on the last council meeting.
I would, I would like to request that from now on, whenever the Tax Abatement Review and Reporting on it, that we have the public, the Tax Abatement. So, 'cause, um, there's some questions that could have been answered that I have, but, you know, they look like they got answered, so I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. So, I have a motion by Councilman Resnick and seconded by Councilman Beagle to accept the recommendation from the Tax Abatement Review Committee to adopt a resolution authorizing the issuance of a seven-year industrial facilities exemption cer, certificate for real property as requested by Ops Solutions LLC in accordance with Public Act 198 of 1974 as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, thank you. Uh, new business number two, uh, consideration of a recommendation by the Tax Abatement Review Committee to authorize the execution of a tax abatement agreement with Ops Solutions LLC. Do I have a motion?
So move?
Any discussion? Yes, Councilor Resnick?
Just, uh, one, one comment, uh, since we have the CTO here. Uh, you know, the, part of the agreement is that you'll be working with the Walden Consolidated School District and Oakland intermediate schools and the Connect Center. And, uh, these are excellent opportunities, um, for internships and for exposing our youth to real jobs of today. So, um, I encourage you to make advantage of those resources and, uh, and get some interns in there. I've done it in my own business with, uh, great success and, uh, so please do that. And, um, it seems to me like fifteen additional jobs is going to be light. You'll, uh, if, if this technology takes on and you have to do all the training and the, and the actual implementation throughout all the assembly plants and, and all those vertical industries, it'll be a lot more fun, so looking forward to seeing you grow in Wixom.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Beagle, seconded by Councilman Smiley to accept the consideration of a recommendation by the Tax Abatement Review Committee to authorize the execution of a tax abatement agreement with Ops Solutions LLC. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Very much ayes have it. New business number three, uh, consideration of a recommendation by the Tax Abatement Review Committee to adopt a resolution authorizing the establishment of an industrial development district at forty-six, six forty-three Ryan Court in accordance with Public Act 198 of 1974 and as requested by Tremec Corporation. Do I have a motion? So move? Second?
Uh, as I stated earlier, this request is for the build-out only of the building at Ryan Court. Um, so they will be paying a hundred percent taxes on the bill, on the shell of the building, uh, which, to give you an idea, I think was an estimated probably fifty-three thousand dollars annually to the city. Um, that's all estimated because that building was started after January first, so I don't have any numbers, uh, other than what was on the building permits, uh, for the, the shell of the building. So, at this time, I'd like to introduce Jeremy Holt, who is the Vice President of Tremec. And, uh, if you want to come up, Jeremy? And if you had any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Good evening. I'm Jeremy Holt, Vice President of Tremec. I'm the head of the U.S. Operations for Tremec and a global Vice President for the, uh, our global operations. Uh, we're currently in Plymouth, Michigan and planning to move in 2017 to Ryan Court.
Can you explain what Tremec does?
Yeah, Tremec is a, is a manufacturer of automotive and, uh, commercial vehicle transmissions. Uh, we produce manual and dual-clutch transmissions which are used in high-talk applications such as sports cows and over-the-road Class VIII trucks. In, uh, in Michigan, we're planning to build a new technology transmission aimed at the performance cow market.
In Wixom?
In Wixom.
Awesome. On a personal note, I'd like to say that my stepfather worked for Tremec for a long time.
Oh, really?
In the town of Mexico.
Yeah, so Tremec actually is a, uniquely a Mexican-owned corporation, uh, by investors in, in Mexico City. And, uh, our major plants are in Mexico and in Europe and Belgium. And this is, uh, actually will be our first, uh, manufacturing venture in Michigan and indeed in, in the U.S.
Well, I don't know, did that, did that make it to like have to sustain a campaign from voting through? I'm just, I'm sorry, I feel...
Uh, any other questions? Okay, I have a motion by Deputy Mayor Ziegler and seconded by Councilman Resnick to accept the consideration of a recommendation by the Tax Abatement Review Committee to adopt a resolution authorizing the establish, uh, of an industrial development district at forty-six, six forty-three Ryan Court in accordance with Public Act 198 of 1974 as amended and as requested by Tremec Corporation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, thank you very much. Uh, new business number four, recommendation by the Tax Abatement Review Committee to adopt a resolution authorizing the issuance of a ten-year industrial facilities exemption certificate for real property as requested by Tremec Corporation in accordance with Public Act 198, 1974 as amended. Do I have a motion? So move? Forward? Any discussion? Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Resnick and seconded by Councilman Kennedy to accept the recommendation by the Tax Abatement Review Committee to adopt a resolution authorizing the issuance of a ten-year industrial facilities exemption certificate for real property as requested by Tremec Corporation in accordance with Public Act 198 of 1974 as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Um, congratulations on that. New business number five, consideration of a recommendation from the Tax Abatement Review Committee to authorize the execution of a tax abatement agreement with Tremec Corporation. Do I have a motion?
So move? Forward?
I have a, um, any discussion? Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Beagle and seconded by Councilman Smiley to accept the consideration of a recommendation from the Tax Abatement Review Committee to authorize the execution of a tax abatement agreement with Tremec Corporation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Very good, congratulations. Welcome to Wixom.
Thank you.
Uh, new business number six, uh, consideration of a proposal from Verizon Wireless Incorporated to obtain an easement from the city of Wixom that would provide roadway access to a proposed cell tower and associated structure that would be located near the northwest corner of twenty-three oh seven Orland, AKA Hickory Golf, Hickory Hills Golf Club. Do I have a motion?
Do we have to make a motion since the recommendation is rejected?
Well, yeah.
Okay. Oh, are we also getting a motion? Are you all caught up in it?
Yeah. Uh, so, uh, again, I'll read the, I'll read the, uh, new business item, consideration of a proposal from Verizon Wireless Incorporated to obtain an easement from the city of Wixom that would provide roadway access to a proposed cell tower and associated structure that would be located near the northwest corner of twenty-three oh seven Orland, AKA Hickory Hills Golf Club. Do I have a motion? So move? Second?
Discussion. Is it the Verizon person here?
No, that would be me.
Oh.
Yeah, you, what, uh, what questions do you have on this right now?
I have a, a question that looks like about a, the approximate compound location looks to be about a seven iron from the T-box of the, uh, ninth hole there on the golf course. But yet the driveway access seems to be quite a ways away from that. I, I'm confused as to why the access road wouldn't be directly at Glengarry Road across the MDNR property.
I, I, I don't know, Councilman Resnick, however, if I was to speculate and guess, I would say that the expense of clearing the trees and receiving permission from the Michigan DNR to, uh, do that would probably be more difficult in that area than it would in the two areas that are shown on the rendition, uh, because simply there's less trees. And when they, you notice that over on the eastern part where of the rendition, that drawing where it comes across and, uh, the line of trees, that's considerably, that the distance from Glengarry Road and where the trees begin to where the trees end at the golf course is, is considerably less than where it would be if they were to run a road straight from Glengarry straight across, uh, to the, uh, approximate location that they proposed. Uh, it's also my understanding that Verizon, um, when locating on properties such as this, always provides themselves with, uh, two minutes of access to the property so that for whatever reason, um, of weather or storm creates a set of circumstances that prevents access on one of the roads, there's the ability for them to access the property on the alternate roadway.
It just seems that it's probably five, six hundred yards to the west. It'd be an awful long drive in for them anyway. Tell me, I think that's the only question I have.
Yes. It, it also seemed odd, given our response to their initial proposal for putting the tower in the park, when I know there's a gate at the golf course that fits a vehicle size to get somebody down into the golf course if need be, so to ask to come back through the park again with a, a new road seemed odd, but I appreciate the time that went into it, the staff to go out and visit the site and have a look and ultimately recommend that, uh, this proposal is rejected.
Councilman Kennedy, you...
I was just going to ask if with all that new copiers that we just got for the city, if we could get a better copy of it, you know, that's pretty rough on the eyes.
It's an eye test.
What, it's, it's testing?
Okay. Anything else? We'll send you a better copy next time.
I think the only comment that I have is, is one, I'm, um, not in favor of supporting this for a whole number of reasons as, as far as the access, but I, I think it goes back again to, um, you know, we, this tower's going in whether we, whether we like it or not. It's, it's going to go in some hooker or crook or, uh, shake or bake or whatever, it's going up in that location. And, and again, so it's going to be an eyesore for our community and other communities. And, um, uh, where it sits, whether it's a hundred yards this way or a hundred yards east or west, you know, it's an eyesore. Cell towers are an eyesore, the cell, cell tower we have in the back of the city is an eyesore. And I just think that, um, once again, it's, it's going to go in, it's going to happen. Somebody's going to make fourteen thousand dollars and, and better per year off it and I just think it was a, kind of a, a, a misnomer on, on our part, so that's all I'm going to say. But with that, uh, I'll call the vote. We have a motion by, uh, Councilman Gacho and seconded by Councilman Resnick to accept a consideration of a proposal from Verizon Wireless Incorporated to obtain an easement from the city of Wixom that would provide roadway access to a proposed cell tower and associated structure that would be located near the northwest corner of twenty-three oh seven Orland, AKA Hickory Hills Golf Club. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Nays?
There you go.
There you go. I don't think you have to take a vote. You can if you want.
Do you want it?
No, they were all nay.
It was all nay.
Yeah, 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 okay, cool. All right, new business number seven, consideration of an amended professional services agreement with Safe Bill Michigan Incorporated so as to comply with the Michigan Attorney General Opinion Number Seventy-two eighty-five and the MCL one-two-five point-one-five-oh-nine-two. Do I have a motion?
So move? Forward?
The, uh, explanation here, is it cut dry or?
No, the Attorney General actually, um, looked at, uh, the nature of contractual building official services, uh, some time ago and since that time, uh, we've discussed this matter with Safe Bill, uh, through our attorneys to find language that, uh, we could incorporate, uh, by amendment into the current agreement that we have with them so that we could satisfy, um, that Attorney General opinion. The opinion, um, has to do with potential conflicts of interest and, uh, which can be remedied by a simple contractual language. And that's basically what we have done. a simple contractual language, and that's basically what we have done.
I have a motion by Councilman Resnick, seconded by Councilman Beagle to amend the professional services agreement with Safe Bill Michigan Incorporated so as to comply with the Michigan Attorney General Opinion Number Seventy-two eighty-five and the MCL one-two-five point one-five-zero-nine or two. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you very much. New business number eight, consideration of renewing a two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen winter maintenance agreement with the Road Commission for Oakland County to remove snow and control ice on Pontiac Trail, western city limits to Beck Road and Lune Lake Road, from Benstein to the city limits, along with the adoption of authorizing resolution and authority for the mayor and the city clerk to sign the agreement. Do I have a motion?
So move. Support. Mr. Speaker.
Yes, this, this agreement was reviewed once again with, by the attorneys last year. If you remember, we were negotiating a ten percent increase from years past. This year, with the smaller amount of snow that we received last year, we, we agreed for, we're looking at a two percent increase from last year yet. I think it's the amount of, the amount of support that we give to the city for clearing these roads is appropriate and to the benefit of the city. I think we'll get a better, much better response from our own DPW in terms of making sure that Pontiac Trail and Lune Lake are cleared appropriately, and if we needed to have Oakland County do those roads, they will not be cleared as quickly. So it's to our advantage to do this maintenance period.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, sorry, I was trying to get to a slide there. Yes, could you remind us how long we've been doing this arrangement?
We've, we've been doing this since two thousand five, and yeah, it's been, it's been a good dream.
Yes, Councilman Resnick?
Maybe just one comment on the signed version of the contract from the mayor, we should correct Pontiac Lake to Pontiac Trail on that. It is a Pontiac Lake in Oklahoma.
That is true.
Have a motion by Councilman Beagle and seconded by Councilman Kennedy to renew the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen winter maintenance agreement with the Road Commission for Oakland County to remove snow and control ice on Pontiac Trail, western city limits to Beck Road and Lune Lake Road, from Benstein to the city limits, along with the adoption of an authorizing resolution and authority for the mayor and the city clerk to sign the agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you very much. Ayes have it. Next item on the agenda, the second call of the public. Rules for the call of public are as follows. Public shall address the council during the call of public, which shall be included on the agenda immediately after correspondence and again immediately after new business. The first call of the public immediately after correspondence shall be limited to agenda items only. A person shall not address the council in excess of five minutes unless the time is extended by a majority vote of the council president. Persons wishing to address the council shall identify themselves and their place of residence and shall state their reason for addressing the council. All comments by the public shall be made directly to the council. Anyone wishing to address the council tonight on the second call to the public? Anyone wishing to address the council tonight on the second call of the public? Camera shy. All right, so, I know, but maybe they're thinking that they will be saying that young man. Smile, look at, smiling on a candid camera. Look at me. Okay, so seeing none, I will close the second call of the public. City manager's reports. City manager, good luck, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have some good news to report, and that is that this morning at the Oakland County Federally Task Force for Roadways meeting, the city was successful with the committee for removing the construction of Beck Road and the funding, the federal funding for that from two thousand nineteen to two thousand eighteen.
West Road.
That will allow us to.
West Road.
What did I say?
Beck.
Oh, I said Beck, I'm sorry. It's West Road. West Road from approximately Beck to the eastern city limits. And that will be to move that project from two thousand nineteen to two thousand eighteen. There'll be some economies of scale that'll be realized as a result of that because we'll be able to combine some of our engineering from some of our two thousand seventeen projects on Beck Road and on some of the other roadways along West Road and South Wixom Road. So it'll repair some of those roads and I think send a message to the business community that we're committed and take care of some of the roads in the south end of the city that are in state disrepair. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmen comments? Mr. Smiley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know how unusual this is, but I wanna welcome the videographers, the students from Walt Lake and Solid Age Schools. Can you tell us what schools you're from?
Western.
Western?
Western, yeah.
Will you both be the regulars here, or will be somebody different next time? Do you take turns?
We do.
You don't know?
Switch up, you said.
You switch? Oh, okay. All right, well, thanks for coming. We appreciate you being here. The only other thing was, oh, just thank you, I know she's gone this afternoon for her presentation, I know she was sick the first time this day. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Gacho?
Thank you. I had a really nice and long Saturday working at the fire station open house, getting up food there, and then again passing out cider and donuts at Panther Hunt, and I wanted to congratulate everyone involved in both of those. I think they were very well attended and very good events for the city. Then I read in the spinal column, not sure if other city council members saw it on the front page there, the Scarlet Smile Inclusive Playground that the Clark family has been looking for a home for, and I think it's something, hopefully they'll bring a formal proposal to Wixom, but it, I think, would be a nice bright spot in our city. It would be an inclusive playground for children with disabilities and without disabilities, and it's really a great idea. There's nothing similar around here. The nearest one to their knowledge, I mine, is in Minnesota, and so it's definitely something that would be an attraction to the city for everyone because it'd be an awesome playground to begin with, but then also having the benefit of being able to be inclusive of those in need. And then, little bit of a sad note, to me, I had found out, I went to visit Gunner Metal Park yesterday, and as my fear was with the easement that we voted on, and then clearcutting instead of using another method of judgment, they did clearcut a nice section of that, so that was sad for me to see, especially as the rails of trails continues to move forward. I hope they won't be clearcutting everything along the trailway because I think that'll have a negative impact on the project. I know it's already upset some residents in Indian Wells, so I hope ITC will be a little bit more thoughtful as they move down the easement line. That is all, thank you.
Councilman Resnick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the questions I've had on the West Road acceleration, I was looking at our Pacer study today, and with that West Road section was the only classification one that we had, but would there be a way to take the results of that study and color code it and tie it into our GIS system so that a color coded map could accompany it? It'd be great to see a GIS map that would have the pace remaining color coded to it so you could pull it up and then take a look at the conditions of the roads on a citywide basis on a single map.
We'll, we'll check with our GIS technician to see if that's possible. My feeling is, is it may be, and I think someone else, I think, I think that was Councilman Gacho who actually had talked about that earlier and, and had requested that something like that be done because it'd kinda give us a better understanding of the state of the roads in the south end of the city. But you're very right, that's the only, that's the only road in the city that's a one, and that's in a terrible state of disrepair.
The other thing is, I also attended all the crazy events of Saturday, and I think I was up from six a.m. till about two a.m. The Fire Station Open House was greatly attended. Again, it's great to see, you know, Jeff and the entire crew out there working, and the children of the community, they're just at awe when they come in there, and I think it's great to see the faces on those kids. Panther Hunt, Deanna, your team, another great turnout, a great event. We ran out of cider too quickly, but many people were coming back for seconds and thirds, but what a great event again, and there's just, you know, thousands of people out in our community on Saturday, and it was a real nice, nice thing to see, so that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Beagle?
Thank you. I just wanna thank OPS Solutions and Trine Corporation for choosing Wixom, and I'd like to welcome them, and hopefully be a good marriage with you guys in our city and sponsoring some of our events and things like that. And I too wanna thank Jeff and the rest of the fire group. I got to, I had the privilege of burning a lot of hot dogs in camp on Earth on Saturday. I appreciated it, and it was, it was nicely attended, and I wish I would've been able to attend the Panther Hunt, but my daughter was home from school this weekend, so it was nice visiting with her. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Kennedy?
Chief John, I was wondering, what's happening with those radar signs? I haven't seen them on.
We have a sergeant that is in Staff Command School right now. She graduates at the end of this month, and once she's done, that is on her task list of getting all that bug foot out of it, so we can record that on our computer.
Okay, I appreciate it. I just, I thought it was gonna happen a little sooner, but now I understand. Thank you, sir. I'd like to welcome OPS and Mr. Holden Tremec. I'm glad it's made, it's kinda cool to see you here. It's very cool, excuse me, to see you here. I'd like to welcome Walt Lake TV, thank you very much for being here. Chief Roberts, I appreciated the offer to come and burn burgers with Councilman Beagle. And DM and E, I appreciate the offer to come and serve donuts and cider for the Panther Hunt. I'm sorry that I couldn't make it, I had the distinct honor though of getting to work on military academy nominations and most specifically the young people that are gonna be going to Annapolis. I got a chance to, to rate and choose who was gonna go there for our next military leadership. It was a great honor. I also was able to go to the Scarlet Smile fundraiser, and they talked about the playground, which is almost sixteen thousand square feet, I believe is what they said, and that Stephen Clark from Channel Seven News and his organization was looking to raise one million dollars to help put that in. So it wouldn't be something that would be costing the city any money, as I understand it. Your mouth just fell open, is there a city manager?
I, I think that they're, they're looking at cost sharing on some items, but not on the actual facility itself. Things related to perhaps some grounds maintenance and perhaps some assistance with water and sewer and things like that, because the one million dollar figure includes some sort of a, I'll call it, supply park?
Yes, they did talk about that also.
And they would need sewer and water, they would need the assistance of our engineers, and there would probably be some city costs involved. I would think that those costs would probably be minimal, I would say less than ten percent of the entire project.
I, I hope that the Wixom Community Foundation might be also able to help in that, since I'm the chairman of that. I think also it would be a great thing for the city to have, and I think it would be an attraction, a jewel for our city to have, and I hope that we can help make that happen. I'm almost out there. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Ziegler?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last meeting, there was some, there was a communication from someone in the community, the property owner, talking about the, the water, and then in our update, we had some good news about our water. I think, by the way, I think those questions were answered sufficiently last week, but I wondered if somebody would like to talk about the good news that we got on the water system in the update. I don't wanna put you on the spot or anything, but it talks about Great Lakes Water Authority receiving A rating. Anybody know anything about that, or?
Mark it on them.
Yes, the Great Lakes Water Authority has, has gotten an A rating for bonds, if you're, if you're interested. Fifty percent of the cost of getting water here now is based on the bonding and the funding that they get, and with that increase in bond rating, they, they were almost junk bonds, you know, several years ago, to an A rating is, is a major deal for Great Lakes Water Authority, and we're, they're anticipating a much better rate on the money that they're funding future projects and looking at, you know, using some of that bond rating to supplement some of the old ones as well, so it's, it is good news for all of the communities as part of the WSC Great Lakes Water Authority.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate the comments. I, I too went to the, the events of the past weekend, it was really a good time, really enjoyed it, and it's really fun to see the, the kids out there especially. We've got a millage request, continuation for the millage on the ballot coming up, and I know that some of the ballots have already gone out for the absentees, and I, I wanted to take a few minutes to, to just indicate to the public in a public statement that, that I do support the, the passing of the continuation of the millage, and I did wanna read something into the record, please bear with me, I just wanna make sure that, that there's no equivocation as to where I stand on, on the millage renewal. When I was first elected to council in nineteen ninety-nine, our city was in great financial shape and continued to be for several years. We were able to afford to run the city within the limits of the eight mills set forth in the city charter. Several things have occurred in recent years to change all of that and to create what I believe to be a financial problem that threatens the future of our city. I first realized the problem several years ago when Ford announced it was moving out of Wixom. We were then, we then had the economic turn down and subsequent property devaluation of two thousand eight. From two thousand eight to two thousand twelve, the city, like other cities here in Michigan, made many cutbacks suggested and demanded by the public. We froze wages for multiple years for all employees. We cut our staff through attrition from sixty-five to forty-seven full-time employees. We required employee participation in paying for healthcare and pension benefits. We initiated defined contribution plans to replace defined benefit plans. We privatized some city services and so forth. Unfortunately, those cuts and changes were not enough to solve the revenue problems that we faced. My solution to the problem back then was to amend the, the city charter to raise what I believed to be an unrealistically low cap set forth in the charter itself. The cap was put into place at a time when those creating and those passing the charter never could've imagined Ford leaving, losing the ability to tax personal property owned by businesses, extreme cuts in revenue sharing, reduced property values, unfunded state and federal maintenance provided services, the buildout of our city and the involvement of big city issues here in Wixom. My solution, that is to raise that cap, was presented to the voters, and, and it wasn't just my, my plan, it was what we decided to do as a council. My plan was rejected by the voters in August of two thousand twelve. The public
The public indicated that it wanted only a temporary millage and wanted to solve, wanted us to solve the economic problems down the road. The millage passed, and the administration and council worked toward that end. During the past year has been apparent to most of us on council that despite our efforts to rein in the cost, we still have a severe cash flow problem. We really need to have a change in our funding ability to continue to provide the current level of services to our citizens. I believe that we operate on a rather tight budget and that we provide basic and needed services only. Early this year, we, the council, discussed whether to go back to the public to extend the millage. Once again, my preference was to amend the cap, but my suggestion again was rejected by the majority of the council. After discussion, much discussion during budget sessions and, and other points in time, the council decided to, to put the matter on the ballot. Councilman Gacho made the motion to put the proposal on the ballot. It was seconded by Mr. Resnick, and the proposal was placed on the ballot for this, this fall. As to those who point to the Budget Stabilization Fund as a reason not to support the continuation or the renewal of the, of the millage, I would plead guilty to having a healthy savings account. We do have a healthy Budget Stabilization Fund. One that'll be used if the, if the millage continuation passes to invest in capital improvements that we've put off for the last several years. All one has to do is compare the revenues to our expenses and review our budget to see that a continuation of the millage is, is necessary. I don't enjoy paying property taxes any more than anybody else. I wish there were another way to go about running the city, but wishing is irrelevant. To survive, I believe that we have to address our revenue inadequacies, and I encourage everybody to, to vote to, to extend and to continue the millage. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I only have a couple of things. Ops, welcome aboard. Tremec, welcome aboard. Look forward to seeing you through our, our community and the progress of your organizations. And lastly, I just echo everything that the deputy mayor has indicated in his comments regarding our upcoming millage, and that I have no problem diddowing what, exactly what he said, that I plan to support the millage. And I look forward to our election day. It's, I think, not only with our millage here, I think election day is going to be a big, a big day in the history of our, of our country. And I would hope that everybody would have the opportunity to either vote absentee or come down on election day and vote. And with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
A move, support.
I have a motion by Councilman Beagle and seconded by Councilman Kennedy to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Thank you very much. Have a good evening.